Good.
Okay, I'll call this meeting to order, and if we can have a roll call.
Councilmember San Antonio.
Present.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Here.
Councilmember O'Hara.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Lyons is absent, and Mayor Ehlers.
Here.
Record will show that all members of the city council are present with the exception of Deputy Mayor Lyons.
Okay, item number three is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise if you can and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four is Special Presentation and Proclamations. We have none tonight, and that brings us to Oral Communications. And how many do we have? We have 20. So we have a fairly light agenda. What I'm going to do is, since we try and keep it to half an hour, I'm going to reduce it to two minutes each, but we'll do them all in the front end of the meeting, and that way, because it's right on that break edge. I did want to start out with a reminder that, and this is on the back of the white slips, and it's basically a reminder on the procedures for addressing the council. The audience and speakers are asked to be respectful and courteous. Please address your comments to the council as a whole, and avoid personal attacks against members of the public, elected officials, and city staff. The purpose of oral communications is to bring attention to the council on a matter or matters which do not appear on the agenda tonight. Remarks shall be addressed to the city council as a body and not to any member of the city council staff or public. State law prohibits council action on non-agenda items, like oral comments, because the public would be unaware prior to the meeting of any potential action. If needed, oral communication items will be or may be referred to the city manager either for resolution by administrative action or placement on a future agenda. As I said, tonight we'll do two minutes per oral communication, and that should get us close to the half hour. So if you have less than two minutes, by all means, take it, and we'll try and get this all done in a half hour. So with that, if you'll call the first oral communications.
The first four. Marco San Antonio, councilmember. Councilmember Luke Schaefer, Natalie Guyer, and then Julie Thunder.
All right, thank you. I'd first like to acknowledge the assassination of Charlie Kirk today. He was a father, a husband, a son, and one of the biggest advocates of free speech. Whether you believe in his Christian and political beliefs, or you were against them, he was always happy to have a debate or conversation in a public forum, which is much of what we do here within these chambers. In all of the clips I've seen of his political or ethical debates, his voice never raised to yell, and he always let the other person speak before he replied. I sit here before you frustrated, a bit worried for the lives of the people around me, and I feel angry for a Christian voice silenced. On the heels of our ICE meeting a few weeks ago, where I did not feel like public discourse, where it did not feel like public discourse, but more of a yelling of demands, and it felt like if anyone dissented, it would have wreaked other havoc within these chambers. I know we all have feelings about the political climate today, what happens in our city from development to our city council members. I just ask that we keep things civil and allow each other to be heard. We sit up here as electeds, and in my case, at an appointee, to listen to you collectively, and to do what we can to help the city as a whole. We don't interrupt public comments or talk over you. In fact, most of us take notes up here fervently, whether you like this or not, because your needs and wants are important to us. I want to end by saying this. I've largely been quiet in my seat. I can assure you, in the light of what's happened today with the assassination of Charlie Kirk, and seeing the fear of that young Ukrainian woman's eyes savagely murdered in North Carolina, it has awakened something within me. I can assure the citizens of Encinitas, I will no longer be the quiet one. I implore my colleagues and fellow citizens to no longer live in fear or to be silent.
Well said. Thank you, Marcos. As everyone here is probably aware, charges have been filed against me as of yesterday. I do not believe these charges are warranted, and I am not guilty of the accusations that have been presented to the public. While I look forward to the truth coming out over the course of the legal process, I wanted to be clear that false accusations will not distract me or deter me from the vital work that the people of Encinitas elected me to do. I am here to serve the city of Encinitas, as I said in my campaign, and everything I've done up until this point. So I thank you.
Thank you.
Natalie Guyer, followed by Julie Thunder, Ron Medak, and then Delilah Gunther.
Hello, City Council. My name is Natalie Guyer, and I am a sophomore at San Diego Academy. I want everyone at Encinitas, students, drivers, pedestrians, and cyclists, to be able to travel safely every day without fear of accidents or unsafe roads. Even when following all rules, road signs, and looking both ways on our streets, you are still at major risk for getting injured or even killed. I specifically want to talk about the problems on Santa Fe drive, where the largest public high school in Encinitas is located. It is the most dangerous at drop-off and pickup because there are hundreds of drivers and bikers all on that condensed road at the same time. A couple of years ago, one of my close friends was struck by a car while riding her e-bike home. She was halfway through an intersection when a driver entered without looking. We can help protect Encinitas residents from something like this happening by implementing safe passages for bikers and pedestrians, installing speed cameras, red light cameras, and putting up electronic road signs. We are also asking for Village Square Drive to be renamed to Emery's Crossing as a memorial and as a reminder that these roads are shared with children, whose safety depends on our choices. Encinitas needs to declare a local roadway state of emergency. This calendar year alone, four families have suffered unimaginable losses: 66-year-old Emily Hernandez, 45-year-old Marcos Perez Domingo, 60-year-old Roderick Armstrong, and most recent of which being Emery Chalakian, a 12-and-a-half-year-old girl, a sixth-grade student at Parkdale Lane who is just beginning her life. On Encinitas Boulevard, it is not uncommon to see speeders, people who run red lights, and people who are on their phones. In fact, it is not only Encinitas Boulevard, it is nearly every street in our city. Four deaths in one year is an emergency. We need our city leaders to show us they truly value the safety of their residents, and our laws, traffic enforcement, and road conditions should absolutely reflect that. Thank you.
Hi, Julie Thunder Cardiff. First, I want to say thank you, Councilmember San Antonio. That was a very well-received statement. Now, as you all know, the state of California continues to come after cities like us over zoning and density issues. It's not going to stop. It's getting worse. It seems like every week we hear of some new upzoning plan they have with no funding for streets, sewers, schools, and everything else. It's clear they aren't going to stop. Mayor Ehlers, actually, all four of you, thank you for the support you've shown for local control. I'm asking each of you to take the lead and begin actively working with other cities ASAP, and our state representatives, to return California to a local control state. Be loud so that we know you're doing it, be deliberate so that they know you're doing it, and let us know how we can help you. Thank you.
Dr. Ron Medak, Levenhein, Commissioner and the Mobility Traffic Safety Commission. On Tuesday, September 2nd, there was a serious solo e-bike crash, which occurred on Santa Fe drive directly in front of SDA. On Sunday evening, I had already by then reached out to the wife and obtained that the gentleman who was injured had four broken ribs, a pneumothorax, with a chest tube in place, was on blood thinners because of a partially obstructed vertebral artery which serves the upper spinal cord, brain stem, brain, and cerebellum. I talked to the crash victim on Sunday directly, and he agreed that I could tell his story. He was coming down on his e-bike, went across the entrance to the school. As he went up, he was guided by the arrows and the bollards that were placed, and directly collided at an oblique angle with a curb. Are you the IT guy? Can you put a picture of that up for me? That curb on the right-hand side is where his front wheel hit. The handlebars were torqued, he hit them, broke four ribs, and his head landed in the mulch over by the sign. I plan to speak to this at Commissioner's Corner. My intention was to alert Mr. Bandigan and the other commissioners to the dangerous infrastructure in place on Santa Fe drive. As I began my presentation, Mr. Bandigan first demanded that we vote to extend the meeting. Since it's protocol, I said that's fine, but I was shocked and actually lost my breath when Mr. Tile, one of the commissioners, voted against extending the meeting, even though he knew that this was what the event was, because I'd already told him, the other commissioners. As the motion passed, we ended to discuss the matter, but I started to discuss the matter and explain, and Mr. Bandigan cut me off and declared that this was a Brown Act violation. Since I'm not a parliamentarian, I accepted that, but when I went home and looked up in my manual that I was issued as a commissioner on page 34 and 35, if there is an emergency that demands immediate relief, then you're allowed to present that. And I want to say one more thing so you know, that curb is still there. Nothing's been done. Thank you.
And Ron, we will refer it to staff. So they see the picture, and we'll refer it to staff. We can do that.
Next speakers, Delilah Gunther, Lena Troyan, Rachel Graves, and then Jeannie Lowe.
Good evening, councilmembers. Thank you for allowing us to share our thoughts with you on street safety through this video. Please install visible safety features at busy crosswalks. We just want drivers to slow down and see us when we're in crosswalks. Thank you.
In the wake of four fatalities in Encinitas in, like, less than a year, my friends and I wanted to share with you about how we feel about the safety of our streets and our own safety. Do you feel safe when crossing streets in Encinitas?
No.
It depends what street, but if it's like a busy road, I wouldn't cross. Usually, I'd just find a different way.
It depends in which crossroads, but sometimes not when cars are turning, or turning left and right, and sometimes they don't see you when you're crossing the street.
Certain streets, no, and other streets, yeah.
Which streets do you not feel safe crossing?
The one where she got hit.
When you're in your hometown of Encinitas, do you feel safe when crossing the street?
No.
Yes, mostly, but there's some times where I feel a little uneasy.
But when are the times that you feel uneasy? Tell me a little bit about that.
When I see drivers just, like, zooming past, not even, like, stopping to, like, glance at pedestrians, that are even just, like, on the side.
Do you feel safe walking from your ballet studio to, let's say, Pete's Coffee?
No.
Do you feel safe in your hometown when you're crossing the street?
No.
It depends what street it is, but if it's just like a small intersection, I do. If it's like a big intersection with reckless drivers, I do not feel safe.
Um, I feel safe most of the time when, like, the cars stop and, like, make eye contact with you, and, like, they make, they're like, they see you, but not when, like, the cars don't stop and you just, like, drive right by.
It depends on which street. The big ones, like the four-way ones, those ones, no, I wait until it's, like, fully stopped and, like, no car is, like, trying to turn.
What makes a street feel safe to cross?
When no other cars are driving past, when there's no other cars, even other lanes that won't turn my direction are crossing, when it's just me crossing the street and all the cars are stopped.
Like, putting in signs to warn drivers about, like, crosswalks that are put in place, stopping and just, like, knowing that they know that I'm crossing the street.
What would make me feel safe is if the driver, like, completely stopped, and he makes eye contact with you, and they just, like, fully stop, they don't, like, halfway stop.
Send extra parent, or there's a crossing guard there or something?
Um, to have crossing guards, or have, like, cameras out.
What makes a street feel safe to cross is when drivers are actually stopping at the stop sign and are making eye contact with you. There's a crossing guard, or like, you know the people aren't running red lights or going too fast.
A street, to feel safe to me, probably, like, not that many cars. A crosswalk where cars can see that it's a crosswalk, and also where cars aren't going, like, 50 or speeding.
And I feel like if there's, like, a bunch of warnings, especially coming up before the stop sign, not just their stoplight, not just right there, it would make me feel a lot safer knowing that people are prepared, or like, and it's not, now they don't have the excuse that they just forgot, it's like, they've given several hundred.
I'm a swagger.
Just the cars whizzing by, I've seen it a lot.
Here are a few ideas we have.
Yeah.
Number one, install flashing lights at Emery's Crossing.
Let it run.
So the drivers are alerted when there's a pedestrian in the crosswalk. Number two, place solar-powered radar speed signs near the accident site to remind drivers to slow down. And, number three, install red light cameras to hold drivers accountable. These are cost-effective solutions that can make a significant difference in how people drive in Encinitas. City Council, please hear our voices and take action so that my friends and I can once again feel safe crossing the street.
Here are a few things we want to see happen. Declare a state of emergency so that we can break down barriers, unite departments, and take swift lifesaving action. Fight for grant funding to bring every priority project in the comprehensive safety action plan to life, making sure our community has a voice at the table in planning and development. Adopt a quick build policy so that we can cut through delays, deliver safety improvements faster, and apply proven low-cost measures citywide without hesitation. As representatives of our city, your courage and leadership are urgently needed. Lives are at stake, and our community cannot afford to wait any longer.
Thank you. So if I could get, I used a little mayoral discretion just then, and it was two minutes for two speakers, and I need one more person to yell to fill out a speaker slip, and just so we have it on the record that we had three speakers in a row, if that's okay with the clerk. But that's one of the advantages of being mayor. So with that, can we, who's the next?
The next speakers are Rachel Graves, Jeannie Lowe, Daniel Murray, and then Molly Hentlian.
Good evening, Rachel Graves. Marco San Antonio, thank you so much for your words. Born and raised in Encinitas, and there's been times when we've had neighbors tell us if we attend a certain political campaign meeting, that if, because the person hangs a conservative sign outside their house, then we should be hung. I'm married to a black man, that doesn't go over well, too well in Levenhein. These are the kinds of things that we're facing, and I thank you for asking people to not be silenced and to bring people together. This is not what Encinitas is about. I also want to talk to what Commissioner Ron Medak attempted to speak at a traffic commission meeting. I listened to it, and I thought it was really odd also that Abe Bandigan would cut him off when he's talking about a really serious section of the newly designed safe corridor on Santa Fe. On the 23rd of August, I went to Catherine Blake Spears' press conference, and I walked around the protected bike lane and found a very serious, there were a lot of problems, a lot of serious problems with the design and the implementation of the design, but one in particular I knew was an imminent risk to somebody, and I sent an email in. I know that you guys all want to redo this project and fix things that are so wrong with this project, but some of these items need to be fixed today. They can't wait till October 1st to be fixed, and clearly, someone's injured now because of it. Please use your gut instinct. You guys are all very intelligent. You know what's safe. Please use your gut instinct, and don't listen to a senator who's trying to tell you what to do in our town.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers. First, I want to express, acknowledge and express my appreciation to councilmembers for your hard work over the past six months in addressing costly past mistakes related to developmental review and plan checking. You've tackled significant issues from Fox Point to the Clark Avenue Apartments, along with concerns related to Bobby Riggs regarding the noise and parking issues. Specifically, I'm asking you to do two things this evening. First, I'm asking you to direct staff to prepare a report on conformance issues related to 145 Lucadia Boulevard, which is the Chicken Hawk Bar and Restaurant site. And secondly, I'm asking that you refrain from issuing a notice of occupancy until this matter has been fully reviewed by this body. My concerns are, I'm going to point out two specifics this evening. One of them is there remain unpermitted modifications such as roll-up doors and escape bowl that will negatively impact the quality of life for nearby residents. This restaurant bar is deemed to take over where Filano's Restaurant was on Lucadia Boulevard, which was a quiet Mexican restaurant. For some reason...
Yep, that's two minutes.
Two minutes, it is. Okay, thank you.
Daniel Murray, followed by Molly Hentlian, Cindy Milliken, and then Larry Smith.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Dan Murray. I'm one of Jeannie's neighbors, and I live near the new intensified plan use at 145 Lucadia Boulevard. Once again, I'd like to express my gratitude for your hard work over the past six months for the past mistakes related to development. I also appreciate the past staff report highlighting the troubling 63% DUI collision rates at North Coast Highway 101, which underscores the oversaturation issues and our urgent need for safety as we face potential land use changes. I'm here tonight to draw your attention to some grave errors made during the approval process and 10 improvements at that 145 Lucadia Boulevard. There are unpermitted modifications such as roll-up doors, like Jeannie mentioned, that will be much noisier than the previous establishment, and they were never publicly vetted. In 1997, a petition from our community established a special condition on the ABC 47 license, which states, "There shall be no bar or lounge area upon the licensed premises maintained for the purposes of sales, service, or consumption of alcoholic beverages directly to patrons for consumption." It's pretty crystal clear, they said, no bar served directly to patrons. Unfortunately, the staff appears to have overlooked the important condition. As a result, a bar improvements were made, ignoring our community efforts to stop it, ignoring the existing major use permit, and ignoring city codes. Given the recent tragedies that continue to increase, like we've talked about today, including the loss of local mom Emily Hernandez nearby, we are begging you to take action. I urge you, under item number 13 on your agenda tonight, to direct staff and prepare a report on the conformance issues at that location for the city council's review and refrain from issuing a notice of occupancy until this matter is fully addressed. The staff's assertion that these changes comply with a major use permit is wrong. The plans clearly show that the proposed bar area exceeds the original limits by over 87%, which is a significant change. Thank you for attention and commitment to our community's well-being. Appreciate it.
Good evening, council. Molly Hentlian, District 2. I want to applaud the children speaking about driver behavior. We're all responsible for driver behavior, and one person can influence a positive outcome. On Sunday, August 31st, at about 8:30 PM, I was driving west on Encinitas Boulevard headed to the 5 North. There was an e-biker. He was in the lane. It was about Sunshine Apartments that I noticed him. He didn't have a helmet on, he was swerving a lot, and he didn't have good bike lights. What I observed was a nervous rider. He looked about 16. As I got closer, I slowed drastically down. I was especially concerned for him as he approached the bike lane as it crosses over, right, for the people getting on the 5, so past the gas stations. He was wearing big headphones, and his helmet was dangling from his handlebars. I made sure he went in front of me before I got in the lane. The light turned red. I took the opportunity to roll my window down, and I said to him, "Please wear your helmet." He looked at me, he couldn't hear me, he took his headphones off and looked at me, and I said, "Please wear your helmet." And he said, "Thank you," and he put his helmet on. I expected him to flip me off. So instead, he took his headphones off, put his helmet on, and the car to the right of him, or to the left of him, also had their windows down and saw me, and they gave me a thumbs up. So I feel the message of the story is, everyone can do their part and slow down and look out for each other.
Thank you.
So following Cindy Milliken is Larry Smith, Bernard Sarofsky, Scott Campbell, and then Sarah B.
Hi, my name is Cindy Milliken, and I'm a resident of District 1. I rise to request that Luke Schaefer recuse himself from all votes until his case is concluded for the following reasons. I was alarmed last year when I read on Mr. Schaefer's campaign page, "The goal is to learn a bunch of stuff, how this whole process works." Well, a seasoned politician... Well, a seasoned politician, he clearly is not. Since the election, I've heard rumors, but what bothers me the most is the video that I saw him on, where he said the only solution he can envision to the housing problem is armed conflict. Like, bang, bang, you're dead. I understand you're an amateur, but are you getting out over your skis here? Who would have, who would the starting lineup be for this conflict? Home buyers against the State Assembly? Developers against the Planning Commission? Would it go by neighborhood? And today, we hear he's on video having a destructive violent meltdown over a minor inconvenience, allegedly. Overall, I expect better threat assessment skills from a combat veteran. And thank you for your service, but it isn't a free pass. Ask Doug Applegate. Mr. Schaefer didn't even make it a year before his demeanor became a problem. Establishing dominance is not what we need from elected representatives, especially in this climate. The on-the-job training should have started with letting that go, or with learning how to conduct oneself in a way that does not embarrass him, me, or the city, or with learning that the certainty is that, good or bad, he ultimately answers to his constituents. We think of ourselves here as good people who use their words. We need creative problem solvers who can work cooperatively. We need to build regional coalitions to tackle our biggest problems. I've seen enough. I think he should recuse himself from participating in the council's business while a special election proceeds, or expect a recall. Thank you.
Larry Smith is followed by Bernard Sarofsky, Scott Campbell, Sarah B., and then Dennis Caden.
Good evening, council and mayor. I live in the same neighborhood as Jeannie and Dan, and my talk is pretty simple. I'm, I'm not really tuned in to all the details of this project at 145 Lucadia Boulevard, except that what I know I don't want, and that is people parking on my street because their, their parking is not adequate, and the noise, and possible congregations at parked cars while I'm trying to sleep. And I need my rest. We've also had a lot of accidents on Lucadia Boulevard in my 38 years of residency there, and, you know, public property gets destroyed, streetlights, fire hydrants, landscape, and all that kind of thing. Plus, there's been accidents between cars. And I just think that there's enough places to drink on Coast Highway that probably had something to do with these things, that we don't need another one. But I know it's going to probably be opened up and for business, and I'd just like to say that I'm going to keep my eyes peeled, and I'll have more words to say if I see anything that seems not appropriate. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Thank you very much for the opportunity to address you. I'd like to bring to your attention, there's a gross inconsistency on the building, on the building permit process for building a wall between yourselves and a neighbor. I was told that you can build a six-foot wall, you don't need a permit. We went to, I started the building of the wall, the, an inspector came because a neighbor complained. He told me everything was in good order. About two and a half weeks later, he showed up again to tell me that it wasn't in good order. There was actually, there's a different rule that applies. Apparently, some person in the, in the building department has different rules to it on the website, resulting in me getting one of these, which I found highly problematic. It's a violation of administrative citation, wanting giving me a very short time period to comply, and I can't understand how it is that on the website, it says to do this, it says you have to conform with county rules for building a wall less than six feet. I did that. I end up with a violation, and now they're telling me I have to get a permit for something which it clearly says. And I have brought along enough stuff from your own website that says you can, you can build a six-foot wall without needing a permit. So I don't understand how you can have this level of inconsistency and subject us to this ridiculous, you know, ridiculous stuff that we have to deal with now. So I just want to bring that to your attention. I do have names of people I've been dealing with, but...
And if you can make sure, I know they've got your contact information, but if you make sure that they've got your phone number or something, we'll have staff reach out.
Thank you.
Next is Scott Campbell, followed by Sarah B., Dennis Caden, and then Beth Whitaker.
Okay. Good evening, council. Thank you for all showing up. And one of the things I noticed today was a safety-related item. I saw school buses all over the place. There's no doubt that school buses are safer than e-bikes, and they're safer than parents rushing to school. Also, on safety, a real thing is the cost of ped path, and that's going in. This is real safety infrastructure. It's not a feeling thing, it's just real structure. Assistant Assistant Review Panel has a few comments, and the mayor's preempting us a little bit, so we're going to double down. We're going to talk about meeting decorum. Next page, please. We lost our clicker. I was at that meeting a couple of weeks ago, and it was kind of threatening with all the signs and sticks, and I'm a big guy, but I thought people were going to rush the stage. And I'm glad for the sheriff's presence here, I feel pretty safe right now. But I think all the people in this room are a little bit guilty on all sides. B., this is the real meetings for real businesses, isn't about fun and games and yelling and screaming. Interestingly, on the, on the rules that I saw, it says clapping, and the mayor might have a different, different set of rules.
Not in the new ones.
Now, there's also rules for how the council runs our meetings, and back in the day, there were certain maneuvers that people could do, and I'm not going to do some of them because there's kids here, but one of the meetings that's very modern moves now is you see people like this, with their thumbs, and you see them looking down. Everybody in the room knows what is going on when that is happening, and that means you're on the phone. Now, if you're up sitting on this desk, and you're on the phone while the city's conducting official business, I feel disrespected. I want to know who is, who is on that other end of the line and what's being taught. I don't think that's a good thing, and I wish that, I asked the mayor to stop it.
Sarah B., followed by Dennis Caden, Beth Whitaker, and then Marco Gonzalez.
Hello, and good evening, council member and council manager. My name is Sarah, and I would like to share my point of view and a brief of my experience with you. I'm sleeping in my car for four, four months, and I did it out of lack of better option, suffering from homelessness. The reason is because I was in such a grueling circumstances, living in unhealthy and toxic environment in my previous apartment. In FSL Foundation, senior living for three years, and I suffered smoking and drug-using of junky next-door neighbor that coming through the dark work and ventilation into my apartment. I had reported repeatedly to the property manager, Deborah Gardner, and she did nothing to fix the problem. She was a heavy, heavy smoker and drinker herself. The building policy required non-smoking, but it was just a decoration sign. I reached out to the higher management and executive, Carolyn Campbell, Tammy Bonannon, and they did do nothing either, and the property manager becomes hostile and antagonist against me for reporting it. I developed respiratory problem, difficulty to breathe, unable to sleep. My health was deteriorating. Finally, I decided to rescue myself of that hellhole, and I left behind all my belongings, and property managers steal my deposit. But...
So if you can finish up in a sentence or two.
I can't. I see that my sleeping in my car becomes a stigma during, due to the homeless crisis. I totally understand and respect that the sheriff, deputies, deputies and law enforcement officers...
I have to cut you off at this point. So can you write, write us, just write us an email and tell us your whole story. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Can I give it to somebody?
Yeah, you can leave it with the clerk, and they'll get us a copy of it if you want to do that. That, you can do both, too.
Next is Dennis Caden, followed by Beth Whitaker, Marco Gonzalez, and then Karen
Could we get a microphone that actually accommodates humankind instead of this stick where people that are short have a hard time? The button here takes too long, and I just find it frustrating when, especially younger people, you can barely hear them. So I'd address that sometime. Thank you. My pet peeve. The other thing is story poles. We've never had story poles in Encinitas because we've never needed them, because we had height limitations. But now that we no longer have height limitations due to the housing element, I think story poles would be a great idea, especially to alert the community that something big is coming. And so that would be helpful. The other thing is the break clock. Could we get the break clock to actually go backwards, so that you know how much time you have before we come back into action? And could you get on the agenda as soon as possible, dark skies, especially around the Bataquitos Lagoon? And I want to reiterate the mayor's comments before on oral comments. It says here, "Community Communication Guidelines. When addressing the council, please address the council as a body, not individuals." You said that less than a half hour ago, and yet one of our council members got ridiculed. So I can't help...
Thank you.
...not paying attention.
Beth Whitaker, followed by Marco Gonzalez, and then Karen Caden.
Hello, I'm Beth Whitaker. I'm a resident of Encinitas for 20 years. So MAGA is going fast and loose with our U.S. Constitution, and I am an active opponent of fascism in America. My patriotic defense of our democracy and our constitution extends to this council. I'm here to stand up for the right to due process, and if a council person behaved in a manner that they, that they're accused of, I think they should be held accountable in court, not here. I'm here to stand up for your right to due process, and if you did behave in the manner you're accused of, I want you to be held accountable in court. If you abused your power, you don't belong in office. I find it disappointing that public conversations defending you focus on vilifying attorneys, developers, and past council, instead of actually saying, "He would never do that." I don't hear people saying that. Maybe they are saying it, but that's, the main arguments are about conspiracy. And I hope that things are done fairly in court, and no one should be forced to recuse themselves because they're accused of something. Also, I find it disingenuous to be outraged by gun violence, killing a particular NRA proponent, and not to have also been outraged by the murders of Democratic legislators in Minnesota or schoolchildren all across America.
Thank you. Marco Gonzalez, I'm going to make some statements on my own behalf as a concerned citizen, not as a client, and not on behalf of my firm. It brings me no joy whatsoever to watch our city go through scandals like the one Mr. Schaefer has brought upon us. And let's be clear, what we are facing is not just a matter for the courts, it's a moral crisis for our city. Mr. Schaefer stands here charged with felony assault and two misdemeanors, including hit-and-run and dereliction of his sworn duties. But let's not forget one additional disturbing fact. A young child was in the truck bearing witness to this reckless conduct. No parent should place a child in that situation, just as no leader should carelessly betray the trust to those he represents. And Luke knows this is not a one-time lapse. Four years ago, a 14-year-old boy was assaulted because Luke didn't like the way he was riding his bike. And though he escaped prosecution, the incident revealed something deeply troubling about temperament and judgment. The charges now faced echo the same troubling pattern. Mr. Schaefer swore an oath not just to obey the law, but to embody the law, to hold himself to a higher standard, to act with integrity, dignity, and restraint. When the people of Encinitas entrusted him with office, they did not give him license to indulge his temper, to endanger others, or to shirk accountability. They gave him the privilege and the responsibility of public service. Public service is a sacred trust. When that trust is betrayed, the damage runs deeper than any criminal charge. It corrodes our faith in governance. It sends the poisonous message that power excuses misconduct, that those who lead may live by a different standard than those they serve. I reject that message. We must demand accountability. For the sake of Encinitas, for the sake of our citizens who deserve leaders worthy of emulation, you should resign immediately, Councilmember Schaefer. Do not drag this community through the mire of your personal downfall. Do not pretend and ask us that this is business as usual, that it can continue while these charges hang over your head. Encinitas deserves better.
I'm Karen Caden. I've been here for 44 years. I raise children. I worked on safe route to school, and I want to thank you, kids. I'm so proud of you guys. And I also want to make sure that everyone is listening, that they are driving a lot better and slowing down. I am looking more around, and I'm sorry. I mean, I have lost family members, too, regards, I'm not going to go detail, but, you know, we all got to be respectful and work with the system and not keep on, you know, banging on the table. And I disagree with Marco Gonzalez. There is a system, and follow it. The courts are going to take care of it, and let's all be respectful. We're neighbors here. We all have a reason why we live here. It's because we love Encinitas. Let's protect it. Let's not be hateful people and jam down on these guys. Okay, here it is. Number one, protect dark skies in commercial residential neighborhoods. Encourage tightening up the code to secure for wildlife neighbors and have quality life for all. Also, acknowledge the general plan in regards to scenic view corridors, like one regards from I-5 from Lucadia Boulevard to the Bataquitos Lagoon, there is a scenic view corridor. Please put this in the general plan if it can be written down for reminder. I would like to thank the, today, I'd like to see more police cyclists on our streets. I saw one today, and he has pulled over several people. Thank you very much to the sheriffs. And I also want to thank the fire department. There was a fire off of Lucadia Boulevard. Appreciate them. And I want to also thank our new council for all that you're trying to do right now. People have to realize they have inherited the past previous council...
Thank you.
...problems. Thank you.
That does conclude oral communications.
Okay, well now, item six, a report from closed session. We don't have a report tonight, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Item seven, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the posted agenda, and then moving to the consent calendar, no items have been removed by the public.
Okay, and would anybody on the council want to pull any of the consent items? I have none. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve all consent items.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar in its entirety.
Councilmember San Antonio?
Oh, sorry.
It's okay. Motion carries unanimously with Deputy Mayor Lyons absent.
That brings us to, let's see, there were no items removed, so we're on to item 10, 10A, our, which is a public hearing to review and consider the introduction of the city council ordinance numbers 2025-10 and 2025-11 proposing municipal code amendments... Ordinance numbers 2025-10 and 2025-11 proposing municipal code amendments which adopt and modify the 2025 California Building Standards Code. And the contact persons are Planning Manager Maynard, Sustainability Manager Najera, and interim Fire Marshal Villa Gomez. And let's see, since this is a procedure for, this is a public hearing, we will start out with the staff report, and then I will, after that, ask for any disclosures from council before we go to preliminary questions. So with that, staff.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. My name is Ryan Lampkin. I'm the city's sustainability analyst. Crystal Najera, the city's sustainability manager is not here this evening. I'm also joined by Development Services Director Scott Drapkin and Fire Chief Joshua Gordon. Also on the line is Ms. De Brucey and Neil Desnoue with the statewide reach codes program. Item 10A is to introduce local code amendments. The recommended action is introduce City Council Ordinance number 2025-10 and introduce City Council Ordinance number 2025-11, both of which would adopt the 2025 California Building Standards Code with certain local code amendments related to building safety, fire prevention, energy efficiency, and green building. The Title 24 California Building Standards Code sets requirements for constructing buildings throughout California. On a triennial or every three-year basis, cities must locally adopt the updated statewide building code. And currently, the 2025 California Standards Building Code is required to be adopted by January 1, 2026. Cities may also adopt local building code amendments, so long as they are more restrictive than the statewide code. Local code amendments related to the Energy Code and the Green Building Standards Code are often referred to as reach codes. Many of the local code amendments before council this evening are related to the city's climate action plan. Eight of the 20 measures in the city's climate action plan involve the adoption of reach codes, because energy efficiency and green building reach codes result in reduced greenhouse gas emissions in new and existing buildings. It's important to note that reach codes related to energy efficiency must be deemed cost-effective, meaning that the cost savings from the required equipment outweigh the upfront costs of the required equipment. On October 26, 2022, City Council adopted Ordinance numbers 2022-12, 2022-13, and 2022-14, which adopted the 2022 California Building Standards Code with certain local code amendments related to, again, building safety, fire prevention, energy efficiency, and green building. Recent state legislation, however, has made it difficult for local code amendments under the 2025 California Building Standards Code. On January 23, 2025, Assembly Bill, or AB 306, was introduced with the intent of reducing housing construction costs by limiting local control over building codes. And on April 16, 2025, City Council approved a letter opposing AB 306, which eventually became AB 130. And on June 30, 2025, AB 130 was signed into law by the governor. And on August 13, 2025, City Council directed staff to gather as much information as possible regarding the implications of AB 130. AB 130 severely restricts the city's ability to adopt local code amendments after October 1, 2025, when a six-year moratorium on local code amendments will take effect. While local code amendments may be able to be adopted during the six-year moratorium, all of said conditions in AB 130, which would allow us to do so, face legal uncertainty as there's no statewide guidance on these conditions or case law interpreting what they truly mean. It's important to note that any local code amendments adopted under AB 130 can be rescinded at a later date. And as a result, to protect existing local code amendments, staff recommend they should be readopted before the six-year moratorium takes effect. And on August 27, 2025, City Council voted unanimously to readopt all existing local code amendments, with the exception of those pending cost-effectiveness studies before October 1, 2025. And as such, city staff have prepared the two ordinances, those being number 2025-10 and 2025-11, for consideration and introduction this evening. And I'll now go over the local code amendments proposed for adoption. The building code amendments are largely administrative in nature. Some examples of building code amendments include definitions for closet, enclosed space, and newly constructed building, and provide clarification that the city can recover costs when reviewing building permits. Fire code amendments aim to increase fire safety and fire prevention, and some examples of fire code amendments include requirements where the fire protection systems are needed, safety requirements for mid-rise developments, restrictions on flammable and combustible gases and liquids, and additional requirements for residential home hardening. Energy code amendments seek to make buildings more energy efficient, and the two energy code amendments proposed for adoption require new single-family homes to be electric-ready and require single-family and multifamily remodels of a certain valuation to install an energy efficiency measure. Green Building Standards Code amendments aim to make buildings overall more sustainable, and the three Green Building Standards Code amendments proposed for adoption require new single-family homes to be pre-plumbed for graywater systems, new single-family homes to be EV-ready, and non-residential additions or alterations or remodels of a certain valuation to install EV charging stations. So now that I've gone over the contents of the two ordinances before council, I will leave you all with the recommended action, and staff are here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, before we go there, let's, any disclosures, starting with Councilmember San Antonio?
Nothing to disclose.
Nothing to disclose.
Nothing to disclose.
And I have nothing to disclose, too. So any preliminary questions? I think this is our third time hearing this item, so probably not. And do we have public speakers?
Open the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Open the public hearing. Do we have any public? So with that, I will close the public hearing. And do we have any, since it is the third time, I think we talked about it first on the 13th of August, then again on the 27th of August, and now this is the introduction, and we'll even get a fourth, with the second reading, we'll get a fourth hearing, too. But if there's no further discussion items, I'll entertain a motion.
So I'm motion to approve, I just wanted to point out to the public that, as Mayor Ellis pointed out, this is the third time we've seen these. These are reach codes. These are rushing through because of AB 130. Unfortunately, we have to rush something through. But these are codes that we can revisit when we look at the cap, and I believe that is something we intend to do. So if you have questions about these codes, these are kind of the throwing the rope out there as far as we can throw it. So if we get there and we decide that's where we want to keep it, great, but if we need to pull it back, we can still do that. I think it's really important, just to kind of reiterate that for everybody, I motion to approve this, under that understanding.
Second. Okay, and then Councilmember Schaefer's got, pressed your button?
Yeah, that was it, second.
Okay. And the other thing I would point out is that there are a couple more reach codes that we don't have the cost effectiveness study done, and I believe they're going to be done. I'll turn to the city manager here.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. It should be done by the end of calendar year. Thank you.
So we would have an opportunity in the future to add those because they fit, they can go beyond the October 1 because of their, they fit in some of the exceptions in the AB 130 law?
Yeah, that's correct. It seems likely that they fit in with some of those exceptions.
Okay, very good. So with that, I've got a motion and a second, and I will call the question.
That motion does carry unanimously with Deputy Mayor Lyons absent.
Okay, with that, we're moving right along tonight. There are no informational items, and we will move on to council-initiated item 12A, which is a council-initiated item from Councilmember Jim O'Hara regarding the use of sedentary VMS signs, which I had to look up, by the way, to promote traffic safety messages when not in use at city projects. So you have the floor, Councilman O'Hara.
Sure, and I think a lot of the residents have touched on kind of the call to action on this, which is communication and safety. And obviously, public safety has been a huge concern of the council. I don't think we have that list available for this meeting, do we, of projects? Okay. So do we have the picture of the VMS?
I do.
Okay. So the city owns a number of VMS signs. We use them through public works, and we use them on projects. At times, as you can see in this picture, they sit in the yard, what I refer to as sedentary. As someone who advocates for safety, I see an opportunity here. And as someone who likes the city to run efficiently, I see a higher return on investment. So I think this is an opportunity to take a resource that is sitting there and do some good with it. And so what I'm proposing is that we use sedentary VMS signs to promote traffic safety messages when they're not in use in city projects. I'm going to leave it for public comment, and I'll come back to explanation.
Okay, do we have public comment?
We have two right now. Molly Hintlin, followed by Beth Whitaker, and then Scott Campbell.
Good evening, council. Thank you, Dennis. I'm a short person. I support this initiative, and just this last week and end of last week, I've been doing some traffic monitoring. And we have some serious issues on Encinitas Boulevard by St. John's. What I witnessed last week, I was in the second lane, and people were going westbound on Encinitas Boulevard and doing U-turns in the simulated islands to then go eastbound so they could turn on Belore. I also witnessed people using the bike lane as far down as below St. John's as a third lane. So I feel for the bikers trying to get into the bike lane. Where are they going to go? I have lots of pictures, but I was having a computer phone issue, so you just kept me talking. So the other thing is I spoke to the crossing guard at Oak Crest, because I also observed some craziness at Oak Crest, trying to, people turn in there. And then there's the private school, also entrance, not just to the road's private element, preschool, which is immediately at the sharp corner of Belore, but up another entrance for St. John's. So I see an opportunity for these signs, and I would love to see that sign blocking the simulated island so we can correct the behavior. So we certainly need to do more behavior correction. I will say tribute to our sheriffs that I've seen more traffic patrol. I've been seeing lots of motorcade and people being pulled over, so that's a good thing. But again, what I said in oral comments, it all starts with us improving our own behavior behind the wheel and watching out for each other. Thank you.
Beth Whitaker, followed by Scott Campbell.
I'm not for or against this. It sounds like a really cool idea, and I applaud like any sort of creative use of equipment that's not being used. That's a good thing. I do want to request that research be done before presenting something like this. There are a lot, there's some research that shows that manners of doing, using this type of equipment for safety can backfire and make it worse. Messaging can be unclear. There are reflective issues that happen. They can be a distraction. They can also wear out the equipment to cause cities to have to purchase additional equipment because they're being used more than they're meant to be used. All of that, I hope that that research would be done prior to implementation and that we'd use guide, that we use, if we do do this, which could be a great idea, that we use, like, well-thought-out research before we just put it out here for us. So that's my request, but anything, if it could be a great idea, so thank you for being creative.
Okay, my name is Scott Campbell. I live in Encinitas District 1. Thank you, Councilman O'Hara, for bringing this up. Yet another concrete example of traffic and road safety. When I look at the clock, I think there's something wrong. We had 20 public speakers, consent calendar agenda, and it's not even 7 o'clock, but this is great. So I'm going to keep this really short. The signs are somewhat controversial. If you listen to the traffic engineer, I think people do see them, but they do become immune. My main issue is placement, and I ask that these not be placed in the road or in any bike lanes, because if they're placed in a bike lane, they really are not helping anything at all. They're an impediment and more of a hazard than anything they say. And that's all I have to say on this. Thank you.
Wow.
That concludes speakers.
Okay, and do we have, there we go, Councilmember O'Hara, you got the floor.
Perfect. So I'll just address the comments really quickly, because I think that's an important part of this. The goal is to use, is to get the return on investment, which we currently don't get. And so to put the value all the way up on this while improving safety of the city, I think it does, and the intention of it, is to increase conversation, communication, and adjust behaviors and awareness. The concerns of use and placement, I think, are really, really valid, really important, and it's one of the reasons in here we addressed the idea of coordinating public works with the sheriff's department. And the idea would be to have the sheriff's department select where, when, and the messaging on these signs, so that it's very clear and done with that thoughtfulness, because we don't want to just put something out there that isn't effective, that confuses anybody or doesn't have the intended outcome. And so the sheriff's collaboration with public works would be intricate to having this happen successfully, and it's definitely something we intend to do. I really expect, and I'm hoping you guys will go 4-0 on this, I think this, I think this would go 5-0. Anything we can do to increase safety, and I want to reach forward and go a little bit farther and say that, should the sheriff's department think there is a need to blitz this to start off or to have additional units, I would recommend the city manager, if we could look into the ability to rent more if needed, just to open that up so we can get the maximum effect. I'll yield the floor.
Okay. Councilmember Schaefer.
Yeah, I echo what Councilmember O'Hara, I think what you said, Beth, Molly, all the three speakers, Scott, it's right in alignment with what we've been talking about. I talk about it weekly with the city manager, talked about doing a whole-city traffic study and the whatever, whatever that we can get around to that, but sooner rather than later. I think this is a very cost-effective way to get maybe more, you know, kind of along Beth's lines, is actually doing a study with this and knowing what, you know, even if they're across the street from a stopped light, you know, people can actually see the sign versus, you know, too many words. I got, you know, the three words and didn't really see it, distractions, all that stuff. But it's just kind of a reminder of what, you know, Molly was talking about earlier with the helmet, just as everybody's kind of hyped right now, just use that as our moment to start pinning that down and understanding what we're doing, when we're doing, time of year, Christmas, all the different holidays. It's just, I think this is an invaluable study of ours, and it might be worth it for us to eventually put in permanent locations or whatever we come back with this. But this is a huge chance for us to get some return on investment on our, and it's free, it's free from an equipment standpoint, so win-win.
So, and I support this concept. I think it's something we're in many ways already doing, in that it's completely within the realm of the traffic engineer to put them out there. I have personally seen the one near my house on Ranch of Santa Fe, long after the fence had gone in along Ranch of Santa Fe, it was sitting there first with, well, some, somebody reprogrammed and branded with some not-so-nice sayings, but it was out there blank for a long time. It was off the road, which I thought was good. It was not in the bike lane. And so that told me there probably is some additional bandwidth there. I view this as an administrative function that Councilmember Schaefer, Schaefer, O'Hara, I think the city manager can do this even without ours. I'll support voting to do this because I think it's a good-good. I'm trying to think, I would be curious to know how much a new one would cost or what they rent for if we wanted to do additional, and whether there is a campaign that staff might propose. I'll go back 20 years ago to the Stay Alive, Drive 25 campaign that we did, and it may be time for something new like that to add to. And I'm going to take an opportunity here to talk about, today, we had a maximum enforcement effort out there. It's the fourth one. We've been doing them monthly, so if you, if you didn't see it, there were, on Saks and on Ranch of Santa Fe, on all the big roads and all over the place, traffic, the entire police force was out there working hard, and I'm noticing people slowing down. I'm driving the speed limit everywhere I go, and when I first started, people flew by me. And I'm not seeing that as much now, so I encourage everyone, I do this at every meeting I go to, I encourage all of us, by driving the speed limit, you're going to get more people. And as you guys start to drive in the future, you're going to drive the speed limit, too, right? right? And so as we all do that, we'll calm the traffic ourselves on every street, everywhere. And so our sheriff is doing a great job, just to give you a little, little, I think somebody asked about the data. We do have some data from, in the June traffic enforcement, there were 120 stops. In July, there were 200 traffic stops. August, there was 250 traffic stops. And out of that 250, 51 were speeding citations, 52 were cellphone-related. That's really telling. So, you know, we're going to keep it up, and there's many more. This is stuff that the city's working on, been working on, and this is additive to that, and we'll continue entertaining and going down this path. So I'll move approval and...
Mayor?
Oh, sorry.
Really quick, you did have a question? I actually have an answer, though. So I do not have the exact amount of a new one. However, we do have seven VMS boards within our Public Works fleet. We do have one deployed right now, so we have six. To rent, let's say we, let's, we had to deploy our seven, like we had construction or any type of emergencies or anything like that, it would be about $7,700 a month to rent seven. So, not bad. So if, let's say we were to keep them out there for three months, it'd be about $23,000. So that is completely within my authority to approve that, and we would have that within the Public Works budget, so did want to let you know.
Very good. So...
I just want to add one comment to the, you know, today there was a fire over by Quell Gardens, and it was a, it was a small fire, got put out, everybody got to it, but there was, I know some, I got personal emails of people asking about, you know, it took them 30 minutes to get to the east side of OPE to get their kids, and I think these signs are perfect a chance as we get better at them. There's a, there's concern of fire out east or whatever, but just as people start to get used to them in certain spots, I think we can actually get messages out faster to our population. I just, I think the sky's the limit on these things right now.
Councilmember San Antonio?
I definitely agree. Beth, thank you. That's actually a very valid point. I mean, I'm sure there is a study that could be done just to see, see what the value of it is, really, but, you know, so here is a little quote here. "The city has created a public education campaign, which includes coordinating with school districts and private schools to relay traffic messages and implementing electronic message boards at high collision and traffic areas, reminding motorists and bicyclists the importance of roadway safety." You know, even previous Mayor Krantz agreed that this could be a good idea. Those are his words, in quotes, so I agree with this.
Cool. I didn't get a second so far.
I think I had a second.
Oh, okay. Now I got a second. Any further discussion? Otherwise, we'll call a question.
Motion does carry unanimously with Deputy Mayor Lyons absent.
Okay, I've got one, one of the things we do is we follow a policy C003. So I've, I've got, as mayor, I'd like to add an item to a future agenda. And I'm doing this under, in accordance with this policy, section 1B1, where the mayor is allowed to give express direction to the city manager. So I'd like to agendize a review of policy COO3, Policies and Protocols for City Council Meetings to Improve Our Ability to Manage Our Meeting Agendas and Conduct Civil Deliberations. Recent meetings provide ample examples showing opportunities for improvement. Several members of the council, staff, and many public members have expressed a desire to reduce the long and late-night meetings. The current process is relying heavily on the council-initiated items as the primary method for council members to agendize items. While it provides much-needed means for all council members to have their issues agendized, it does preclude scheduling it smoothly into a managed agenda. It also prohibits valuable staff review or comment prior to the hearing. Putting items through staff and allowing city manager and the mayor to schedule items provide a more, will, should provide a more consistent agenda and limit the late-night meetings. So I'm recommending the following be agendized, agenda item to be scheduled. To review and discuss changes to policy COO3, Policies and Protocols for Council Meetings. In particular, one, provide a background and history on the changes to the policy. Number two, discuss whether we should restore the ability of two council members to request items be agendized. This capability existed until 2019, when the council-initiated item process was implemented. And by the way, that would have staff review if two council members put it on a future agenda item. Number three, update and possibly enhance the communication guidelines. And if you pull this out, the communication guidelines talks about a lot of things I talked about earlier in my, my comment at the beginning of the meeting about protocol and keeping it civil and not picking on people. So update and possibly enhance the communication guidelines to promote more civil discussion and better meeting behavior. Consider incorporating a code of conduct similar to Carlsbad's code. Also review what other cities do. And again, this is to make, to put guidelines for our behavior in here, both the council, the public. Number four, consider whether council-initiated items should be limited in their immediate action to being agendized for future agenda, possibly date certain even. And any other improvements suggested by staff, council, or the public that council agrees to incorporate into COO3. And I think Scott Campbell had one where he thought clapping was disallowed in here. I don't think it is anymore, but we can have that discussion when we agendize this item. So I'd like to put that on a future agenda, and we'll get it, we'll get it scheduled. And that concludes item 12. Now we will move on to item 13, which is reports pursuant to AB 1234. And we'll start down at the far end.
I attended San Diego Community Power. Not a lot to report, but I have a slide deck if anybody wants to see it. It's about the update on regulatory and legislative affairs. It's lengthy but informative.
Nothing to report.
Possible direction to staff, I'd like to pursue whether it's possible to have a public, public review of 145 Lucadia. Seems we have enough residents who are interested in getting clarity on what's going on on that property. I'd like to see if we can look at whether that is possible, bring that public review or not. I think public should have some say in what's coming into their neighborhood, and I'd like to see us pursue that if we can.
Okay. And I've got several meetings that I attended, the Encino-Wastewater Board. It was pretty, pretty straightforward. There were three large slash medium contract awards that were in the range of 200,000 to 500,000. I attended the Fire Governance Subcommittee at the Delmar City Hall, and also attended the Sandag Shoreline Preservation Working Group, which we had, it was actually a really interesting discussion on dredging, about all the different dredging technologies, had industry experts, had a US Army Corps of Engineers. If you want to look at any, any video, it's a good one to watch if you want to come up to speed quickly about dredging and where sand comes from, and it was all within an hour, hour and a half, so it was, it was pretty quick, too. The other part of the same meeting was, we had Encinitas's request for 104,000 out of the Public Recreation Maintenance Beach Fund, and they approved it, they approve it and recommend it to the Regional Planning Group, which I'm also on the board or an alternate on, but will be there. And then once they approve it, it goes to the Board of Directors, which, of course, I'm on, and then once they approve it, we get the money. So, and that, that money, that 104,000 will go towards the rebuilding of the Swami staircase. So that's my report, and on to item 14, city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Although council already knows this, and I think some of the public does, but just wanted to let folks know that we did receive almost $1.2 million in funding for La Costa Ped Path. So a big thank you to council. Council authorized us to go for that grant and to submit. And then also, a big thank you to engineering staff, who was the one that worked to get that grant across the finish line and get that submitted. So again, thank you both to council, members of public that were very instrumental in wanting that Ped Path, and thank you staff for getting that across the finish line. The next thing I wanted to give an update on is the citywide quiet zone. The project currently is in 30% design plans. They've been prepared and reviewed by staff and have been, we've provided comments to the designer. City staff held a site diagnostic meeting with NCTD, the CPUC, which is the California Public Utilities Commission, as well as the FRA, which is the Federal Rail Administration, personnel to discuss the 30% intersection improvements. All comments from that meeting were gathered and sent to the design consultant to incorporate into the design. Our next scheduled submittal should be 50% plans, and we expect to have this in October. Once we receive 50% plan, staff intends to conduct community outreach meetings with the public to explain the designs and project schedule. As of now, design is scheduled to be completed in fall of 2026. And I will continue to give updates at my city manager, updates for council, so thank you.
Thank you. City attorney report?
No report this evening. Mary O'Hara.
Okay. And city clerk?
No report.
No report. Did we miss something? It's too early to be done. Yeah, really, you know, I always go back to the Cool Hand Luke, if anybody's seen the Paul, when they, when they work really hard, then the chain gang, and they get done, and it's still daylight. I feel like that tonight. So with this, we are adjourned. Thank you. Whoa. My wife won't know what to do with me.